If they return their investments. So hopefully, if they request the same services, we can provide that if they do. And I know that I met with them this today. Water is not an issue because local fields provide water. Sewer is not necessarily an issue because we can connect. I just have to go down that far. CBS is no issue with services because there is connection on there. They're letting you run from there to board and they're letting you want to get that connection. But there is something that staff is definitely keeping a hand on. But they would need to request that. I don't believe that they would want to request that.
Hannah, I know I've asked you this before, but having heard him and having heard what you just said, what about McDonald's and Randall?
Chris, can you go to the slide to have the purple bubbles?
This one?
No, the one with the purple bubbles. That one, that one. Okay. So you see number one? Number one? Yes. That's what your planning plan said you needed to do according to what it was. So that is our number one priority is to get to R T C. Number two is, of course, that's missing. You see the purple bubble doing all this? We're going to start that process with those purple ones. We understand we need to clean up and make it whole. So that purple bubble right there by one, maybe can you put it up? Of course. Those have been out jumped. Yeah. Right there, that's where McDonald's is and that's where we're going to be focusing on this bubble.
So the purple ones are not in at this point?
Those areas are outside there. Their inside are E T J. But they're running inside.
They're running inside.
Now, the purple bubble by the four, what is that?
Um, I don't know what property that did. I just don't know.
Four, four is not.
Is that the church?
Is that nine seven? Is that? Is that understanding?
Nine seven.
It's nine seven, yes. That's nine seven plus.
Four nine seven.
Does that coincide too?
Yeah, that's behind where the.
That's what I'm asking, is that the church in the building?
The Church of Christ back there. That's somewhere in there.
The nine seven.
Is that part of four or are we trying to do all the purple?
We're trying to do right now one is what we're trying to do. And then we'll let you know that as a three-year plan, the purple bubbles are going to be part of that plan. But my focus has to be to go to the institutions right now. I am, I am driven to get McDonald's because those sales tasks should be coming to us. And so we want to definitely need to do that. But that's going to be a longer process because it's not as much agriculture around there. We have to notify them to do that. But what we're trying to tell you is that number one is what we're trying to do. Number two is trying to, and then if we come back and that's three-year process, over the next eighteen months, we're going to go get all of that purple. But that's going to take a little longer. I want us to notify and have the people to be able to do that.
Okay.
How far down do we get there?
Well, we should have, now, once we do this, it's about a hundred, what do you guys say? To start from one.
Yeah, well, less than that. Because to start on one is going to take us through September.
September, obviously you have one. And then how long for two?
Well, if we did it, we could do it at the same time since we have the calendar. It could follow that same calendar.
So once you're pointing to, so if we can get the inventory, is that at McDonald's by Christmas? I'll not promise you McDonald's by Christmas, but I promise you you should be able to get McDonald's in twenty, in 2016.
Mayor, there's no other discussion or voting. Make a motion. Do you allow me to?
Let me read it for Chris. Okay, item K. Right, yeah, consideration action to approve the annexation public hearing date and directing certain staff actions.
As I inquire, does that include areas from one and two within the motion?
Is that what you feel comfortable with, one and two?
Yes, sir, we need to do one and two.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve areas identified as one and two on the annexation schedule. Approve the public hearing dates and directing certain staff actions regarding whatever actions taken from one and two.
Okay, a motion for councilman to have him may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by councilman Mirov, councilman O'Leary, so do you vote? Councilman Mirov?
Yes.
Councilman O'Leary?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I really want to thank Chris, councilman, for coming to and making this plan, this plan that we adopted, I believe, back in January of 2014. And now I think we're going to be able to see that as we grow. And definitely, this is definitely something we can do and going to share with the citizens as well. Thank you so much.
Can I make one other comment, ma'am? We will need to come back to the council and deal with this wonderful thing called certificates of convenience and necessity. And have that planned in order. You buy it began a day for permission for water and sewer. We'll have to come back to you and show you what parts of the C P N will be expanded. Cover those areas that conform to what Chris put in the chart. So that'll be a separate shift.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item two, D, council memberships, the A L A O, A O, the membership set.
Ah, thank you, mayor. I asked you, mayor, to put this on the agenda. We had a couple requests from different alternate, I mean, sort of different patches that were interested in memberships and things like that. I definitely want to address whatever questions that they had. I looked to see if there are any policies or best practices in reference to how they were. And I couldn't actually find anything that we actually saw. So what I'm just asking you all to do is to look at, I think, these signatures provided for you in your packages, the different organizations, memberships and things such as that.
I believe it's going to come up soon, Mark, from the next year. I believe it's a T M L. I mean, the L A O has one, I think, in July. And the T M L leadership has had meetings also in, um, July 29th, July.
Yes. So we wanted, we wanted to kind of let us know what you wanted to join, what you wanted to do, and let us to attend it. Now, if I could just get off on my last one, my name. I truly believe that networking and attending conferences and meeting different people has a serious value. Not only for staff, myself, but also for elected officials. I think it's very important for you to meet different people in the network to see we can't live in a bubble. We have to be out there seeing other people. So I strongly recommend that you will think about these different memberships, that you think about the different organizations that you care to join either as a council or individual. Because I know some people have different goals and objectives and different time constraints. So we want to provide that for you. However, my comptroller, I mean, Rayna, has reminded me that we need to stay within our budget. And so looking at the first page talks about what we currently have. This is a little bit over, but to turn it out. Based on what you are telling me and how you want to direct staff, we will make sure that in the future that we budget appropriately to allow you to do training, workshops and memberships. Now, we can do it as one month's sum. We can identify a certain amount for each individual council, each individual council place. And for example, if it's place one or place three has X amount of, about fifteen hundred dollars to do training and memberships. And so that's what they have to do. And just like we treat the police department, which they're uniformed hours, use it or lose it. So if you have an assignment or you have a day you wanted to do it, it just goes away. You're not going to have that after that time. So we need to be able to, to be able to give you that opportunity that creates that you can join anything. I know you all need to decide, and it has to be something that's appropriate. Something that, you know, you can't say you want to join the baseball group, but it has to be something to do with the city, city business, elected officials, which all of these organizations do. Some of them, I'm agreeing with, some of them I'm not. But I'm quite sure that there are others that will come up. And so staff is looking for aggression for budgeting reasons. And also, we don't want to leave anybody out because they expect two hundred dollars for this year. And if you want to move money for travel and training from another area, we can do that as well. We want to address everybody's concerns and needs.
If you budget it like that for the new coming year, if one councilman doesn't use it and wants to pass it to another councilman, is that allowed?
Anything in the budget that allows, it just means from one either two or another. And just like we have a revenue member that the council is kind of going to do, so it's going to answer to your questions here. I'll, I'll let him know, I just can't say yes. So, yes. Sorry. I didn't need to do that. Yes. No, ma'am, we're just having a discussion because we needed to be able to discuss that. But however, I can believe that, I think your discussions are how you expressed that, a desire to attend a conference coming up, correct?
No, just membership.
The membership, so you're designing for the membership. So the membership, we can talk about, if you can let the secretary know which ones you care to join. And I think their number fees fifty seventy five.
Right, they're on here. The L A O is a hundred dollar annual fee and the A M O is a.
That should be around fifty.
Yeah, I think it's fifty dollars.
Yeah, I think fifty to seventy five. I mean, that's the range between.
Annual dues seventy five.
Seventy five. So, so you can just let the secretary know which groups that you care to be members of, which can enroll you in that. And then we'll do our annuals every year. So we just don't want to enroll somebody who may not want to do that. If you could just let it go because you have the information and then we can take care of that.
Are we automatically members of T M L? The C D is not a member.
The C D, the city. Or if there's other memberships that we may not have listed, please let us know. And we can enroll them as well. So it's discussion, is the staff directed that you want to care to have an individual per place amount in the budget? Because I'm about to start the budget process into, so is that it? So just, you know, a total consensus.
I think we're going to go that route just to keep it fair between the places and that it should be budgeted out per, per place.
Okay, so we can do it per place. We'll list it in the budget per place or see it. Likewise, on this page, it'll just be place because, you know, the bodies change, but the place stays the same. So we can do it per place and we'll set a dollar amount. We'll talk about the immediate recommendation of this to that. I know we can go forward and we'll have it in the budget. Is that okay? Thank you, mayor, thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Senator Linting and Henry. Air City Managers reported. And I don't know if you want to move down to the library projects and they're here, they've been here that we have before.
I'm going to start with the giveaway money first, just to get. Monica has some letters that she wants to share with you that I received after I submitted my report. And thank you for being accommodated in a way to put it in after the deadline. I set a deadline and I didn't read it myself. So we'll start with some of you programs. We have, we are blessed to have six requests this year. It grows every year. The dollar amount as well, but the C D has been awarded from Phelps approximately, exactly, six thousand sixteen dollars we received. But we received several requests. I have attached letters in there and these two letters we got after I had, submitted them to say that. So here are the, we have other things to do here. Here are the, the six. We have the Wilson County Public Library, Unfortunately Youth Basketball League, Arcadia Luka Diagera, all youth city programs, which used to be Boys and Girls Club. We have the National Tennis and Learning Camp and the Wildcats Football Organization. Now, so what's there of news this year are five and six. The National Tennis and Learning Corporation will be using our court, our field, our court tennis courts here. And having a program is free. And so we are actually trying to put in a department now. The Wildcats Football Organization missed the deadline last year, so they're getting it this year. And they're doing some of the practices. We are all familiar with that. Staff will be, be discouraged, correct? And so each one of these would have, I have a recommendation, and each of them would have an in-kind. And what I'm saying, in-kind, they're making use of our facilities to have their events. I would give us our match for the in-kind, usually then to an event. And so you see the dollar amounts here, the library, two thousand dollars. The basketball league, a thousand dollars, Arcadia, four hundred and sixteen. They will buy free moves to the children, daycare all over the summer. We will be a goal sponsor. The National Tennis and Learning Camp, five hundred dollars, and the Wildcats Football Organization, a thousand dollars. So that's what I'm recommending, pretty well to do.
Is that what she gave us, is her late interest, you said?
Um, well, I had, they weren't my great. I didn't have them, I took them. And the Wildcats missed the deadline last year, they didn't get anything at all. And councilmen yet to brought that to my attention and they submitted in writing. They had expressed interest in him, but they submitted in writing and I have it here. I wanted to make sure I had a letter request from all the entities, so.
You're suggesting a thousand to the Wildcats?
Yes.
And five hundred?
To the National Tennis Learning Camp, a thousand to all summer youth programs, four hundred and sixteen to the Luka Diagera, one thousand to the basketball league, that's the Spurs league, and two thousand dollars to the Wilson County Public Library for their reading club is what I'm recommending.
What do you mean in-kind?
In-kind, it's the same value. They will receive, for example, the library will receive two thousand dollars worth of invite center time. So they would take it as two.
My question here is, to the Public Library and to the Wildcats and Mount City Youth Programs, which ones are receiving those numbers in, in-kind?
Each one of them. Whatever they're receiving in cash, we keep, we keep that in, in-kind.
None of them are receiving, we need monetary donation.
They were receiving a thousand dollars.
Both are money and.
Money in-kind.
Okay.
Phelps gives them money and the city does the matching in-kind.
Okay, okay.
So the Spurs use theirs to use theirs in gym time rather than using it in ballroom. They use it in gym time, so they have practices. Say people the football, they'll be able to use it. The library would use that in-kind.
You say ballroom, does that mean they can have an event for free at the, the.
Yes. So, I mean, so we're going to, for now, the property is somewhere around a thousand dollars to rent it for the day. So they would have that, no cost to them, at a dollar amount. So we actually print up a coupon for them that they can have and present. So we will sign their contract and do a payment with this attached certificate saying that they would have a one thousand dollar certificate of free use for that. It has a dollar amount to it. So that's one of the requirements that Phelps has, that we have to do an in-kind, and I think that's a perfect in-kind.
So the, all city, that's correct, it's an eleven hundred, right? Is it the odd number, is that what it is?
Yes, it's an odd number. Let me see. It's an odd number, that's what I'm saying.
There are six entities in total, right?
There are six entities in total.
That's what I didn't realize.
Because, mayor, this morning, my, my report didn't reflect all six because I didn't, they restricted plot, but the Wildcats came in after and I wanted to give you the.
Wildcats are giving a thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Wildcats a thousand.
Wildcats a thousand, tennis five hundred, all city youth a thousand, Arcadia.
Eleven hundred, I can tell you.
I'm sorry, one thousand, one hundred. Arcadia movies four hundred and sixteen, a thousand to the basketball league, and two thousand for the library.
Is this an action, ma'am?
Uh, I believe it is.
I just ask that for next year, that we switch the dollar amounts around or somebody else gets a higher amount next year or year after. We'll take, because we'll take the.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, this is your vote, thank you.
Which I think like last year, I think all city youth program got the majority, right? Wasn't that it?
Actually, last year, the library got the majority. Two thousand.
I think it was the year before that, though.
They used to score back actually off the whole.
They got seen.
They received the entire amount.
The pre-reading isn't working.
Well, that created me. Actually, the first thing I can make your recognition, but the, the reading program, I think, is a very great program. They've, they've done a whole lot. And remember, they're going to be moving to the new location hopefully sometime soon, so they do break down.
Okay, so we're going to go on to H, consideration and action to approve dispersment of funds for Phelps Summer Youth Program.
Madam Mayor, it was suggested that the and include optimizations for matching certificates or whatever you could call those.
Yes, it's a, the in-kind match.
And the reason I'd like the council to be specific is that that amends your tariff with the use of the, uh, event center. This should be at the discretion of the, the event center coordinator right now as far as the, the usage of the facility.
Yes, and so they have to schedule it. I mean, I asked them, and, you know, normally, they, they use their money live, so now online, rolling sexy nights on Friday and Saturday, they use it something during the week. But if they should use their money that way, it doesn't matter schedule, they will do it.
Do we get a breakdown of how this, this money is dispersed?
At every point.
Like a report that says that, that the library has, has received five hundred in-kind.
Yes, well, last year I did a letter to each one of them to award it and let them know that we put in the check. I can make sure you get a copy of that as well as a copy of the certificate as well. Now, I think he's asking as to how they spent it.
Morgan already told us.
Well, the library next year, and I told her again, they, they're going to come back and if somebody make a report, yes, about their activities. And so we want to be able to come back and say how many people they were able to serve, the same thing for the other organization. So I want to ask them to come back and be able to do that. But last year I believe she did come back and report, so we'll have that again.
So with that, can I have a motion?
I still moved to approve the dispersment of funds for Phelps Summer Youth Program as presented by Henryetta with the monetary figures. And also with the in-kind in connection with the city enforcement.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Eathel, may I have a second?
Scott Seppert.
Okay, who wants to?
Nobody wants to.
Okay. Nobody wants to. Councilman Orkney. Okay, I have a motion by councilman Eathel, second by councilman O'Leary. Any citizen comments on this? Okay, now, Councilman Tejada, how do you think?
Yes.
Councilman Eathel?
Yes.
Councilman O'Leary?
Yes.
Motion carries, five hundred. Thank you.
Thank you.
So back to my report, the Y M C A came to see me. Sometimes I'm reported to the Y M C A that we are, I have a team that we use. And so what is happening at this point is that the Y M C A has to turn around, that this area, the Laverne, Floresville area, needs to have a Y M C A, if you just there. Okay, so in reference to that, they're going to do a marketing study. And the marketing study is actually in your time. They've come, they've come and asked for that. They've come and asked for the study. I was so, at that point, the chairman of the E D C board was here. In Laverne, Laverne has agreed to pay fifty percent of the study. I believe the study costs twenty thousand dollars. And Laverne's E D C, equivalent to their E D C, some of the acronyms, M C C or B C S, is their form of the E D C, has agreed to pay ten thousand dollars of it. So it did make their meeting on Monday, the twelfth, they discussed it. One of the questions that they asked me to ask the council was that, does this fall along the lines of the resolution that you all sent to them along with parks as one of the pieces of this going in the right direction? They seem to be amenable to sponsor this, but they wanted to make sure that this is what the council wanted to say. Is this what the council sees as moving forward as one of the components for the parks recreation? I understand it's not a park, but this is definitely something that they can bring out. The Y M C A is a great entity. They want to locate and it's down to Laverne and Floresville. So they're asking for this. And so I need to go back into directions to Mr. Tommy Baker based on, especially when how you all come up with the case. Is this along the same line of what you were looking at in reference to their participating?
But this is replacing the type of facilities or anything? This is in, in addition to?
This would be in addition to. They just want to say, is this along the lines of what you all were speaking of as one of the many core missions of the E D C? And so they want to say yes, they want to say it's just going along the right direction.
I don't think it meets the core objective of saying it's a park, but yes, I think it's part of their economic development. I would think saying, okay, we're bringing, we're talking about the Y M C A, it's not talking about a park.
Yeah, it has a financial, definitely a financial component to it, but it doesn't answer, it's not the fantasy of, it's not the full answer. But they want to know if this is going in the right direction. And what can you say is this what they, the council would love for them to spend time and not only time with money and going in the right direction.
Is this study to tell us what we need?
This study is determining where to place it.
We do know that with the Y M C A, I mean, I think years back that they, there was a presence here, we went official Y M C A. But I mean, there's certain criteria that we have to meet to become a Y M C A. The main, their main, their main objective, or the base objective is funding. And that is, that's what I'm looking for, that it's a problem.
Yes, if you look at the study they're going to talk about, they have to look and see how many, how many memberships that they would need to have to make it profitable as a family. They want to say that the city, of course, they're going to come back and say, this guy's going to ask for some money. They're going to ask for some money. But right now they're asking money for the study. There can be a donation in kind from the city in reference to having a site, for locating a site. We have many different options for different sites that we can work with. It's definitely an embassy process, but they're ready to move that next step. This is the final study before they determine where it's going to go. It's a pretty good study.
In my opinion, Henry, I think if you're looking at your, your report on Y M C A and Parkland, I think the focus should be on the Parkland before the, the Y M C A. Not that we discourage a Y M C A coming here, but I mean, they're asking us to give them twenty thousand dollars to do a feasibility to see if their program would work here, which it seems like something that they should do themselves. I mean, that's what any business, if you're going to open a business here, I mean, is it feasible for me to go to board? I mean, I think, I mean, they should put, put part of the bill.
It's part of the diligence they have to do, but that, that's why they've come back to the two main players, that Laverne and the City of Floresville, to say, are you willing to partner with us to find out definitely what the term? Now, I won't get into the two meetings with the Y M C A, but in that conversation, it comes to that, will Laverne, if it's here in Floresville, will Laverne come? If it's here in Floresville, you know, back to the, Laverne will we go? And so that's a big question that they're trying to determine. Now, I really think, you know.
I think the answer is no.
Floresville is my home, so I'm saying the best place to be is here. I, I view my population square footage. I have plenty of locations that we can talk about them doing. I have some buildings that they can expand on. I have a lot, a lot that they can, you can offer them in reference to that. We got a lot of, they just got here, so we can do this. It's true.
I say something. There's a demand for a, a Y M C A, I believe, because there's a demand, you know, for youngsters. They more, more places to go to. If they don't like soccer or whatever, then maybe the Y M C A needs something else. Let's give them a shot.
Well, it's not, it's going to be E D C's money. They have said that they're going to follow the Russian. But what I'm hearing is saying that I need to go back and tell the E D C, and you can tell him he's sitting here himself, wearing his E D C hat right now, that, you know, it's one of the components, one of, not in place of. And so that's what I want to go back and tell them in reference to that. Leading to, to my next one is a two-pronged approach, Mr. Baker. And it's a two-pronged approach that I'm seeing. We need to repair for existing parks. There's an ordinance later on today talking about that. That we have about eighty-six and, is it still about eighty-six thousand dollars? About eighty-six thousand dollars an hour a month, kind of, to talk about needed repairs. The lights at Lowdy are working, we have nets up there working, we put some new nets up there, ten square. But also, number two is to design and construct of new athletic fields. But it needs to be determined. I don't know where we get the money from, but we need to have a plan so that we can go forward with the plan. So that's what I'm going to work with Mr. Baker about a two-pronged approach. We said we have some meetings for people to come out and present to them. Okay?
I think if we're going to put any money into anything, it'd be something that's going to benefit us, you know, rather than the Y M C A for them to, for us to pay them some money to then for them to just back out and say, oh, we're going to get some places we can't afford.
I mean, I really, I think they should come present to us. It'd be a waste of time. You know, the, 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 they have to be seeing past the picture on what they're expecting and what they're looking for, you know, in, in a city, a whole city.
Well, if you like, I can see if I can schedule him to come and present what this package is and what everything from a YMCA perspective is about right now. We can probably get him at the next meeting.
That's not trying to down this.
Well, that's how we're going to make this meeting, because EDC doesn't mean getting into the gym. So why couldn't they definitely get them on the twenty-eighth meeting and invite representatives from the YMCA? I mean, if there's some effects that you can have a dollar with them. Um, the USDA is my next point announcement. The city of Florisville announced going to build up a town. Uh, which I have to say, I think it was a success. And you all are really good on TV, by the way. Um, and it highlighted the kids, and I think it was all around the day. And I want to say publicly that literally it brought tears to my eyes about how my staff came together and made progress. And I cannot, I've never seen Florisville, I've been here eighteen months, work together as a team for us to all come together. I really appreciate my council showing up. Uh, I really appreciate my staff showing up. And as my mom used to always say, we showed up and showed out. So thank you so much. And that was a success. Not to mention that they gave out over thirty, and we were the largest group that received funding. And they are asking us to apply for some more funding, which I want to accommodate and hear soon. Uh, attached in there behind the announcement is actually the list of the other recipients that received funding that same day. And if you see, the city of Florisville received the largest funding in loan and the largest funding in rent. So I have to say, as my team and the team of Florisville, you all deserve to be around this. Okay. Um, workshops. Okay, now we have to get to work. Um, Wednesday, May twentieth, we have scheduled a bond for restructuring the event center. Um, we didn't post the last one, but we did post this one. This one we posted. And along that same line, I have announcements in there. I'm going to be passing out to you, but you didn't have. I have some time for the audience to take care of it as well. One of the key things when you start borrowing money during your budget is your treasury. Uh, the city of Florisville at one point had a triple B revenue. And, um, standard floor is regular, actually, May eleven, that was my big day after Monday. And if you will allow me to read to you, the biggest update as of May eleventh, twenty fifteen, standard floor services, S and P, raise is underlying rating for the city of Florisville. General obligation debt three notches from two to eight, from two to B. Uh, this is our outlet. Our outlet is quantitative, and I think it's only the hard work of the control, uh, staff and team effort that we did three notches. Now, when I first heard the news, I thought it was two, or one. My company bought it, my tenant. We didn't move one, we moved three notches. And so this is out there. So you have the official report. It talks about the installments we're planning and how that helped us turn around, uh, our, um, economics. I'm asking something off the top of my head. That, that we, this is definitely something that, uh, an accomplishment that you all started before I got here, but we were able to finish this long race. And I have to say, I so happen to reference to that. So we're ready to refinance our event center. We're ready to see. So is everybody okay? Everybody get vocal? Is it something I keep it? That I'm referring? So that's awesome that we were able to do that. And they did it even before we went out to refinance. So that's excellent, because now we're going to get the best rating that we can get. And, uh, Victor, who called me and said, he's happy, he's got an A. He's ecstatic that we have, you know, an A. He's ecstatic that we have an A rating. And he's thinking that we're not going to have any problems. We're going to make the best, and she's out there shopping for this. And so I'm going to say, I need to share that with you. Couldn't wait till the twentieth. So thank you so much for that. And thank you to them for working so hard. And as Mayor, uh, we are, we today, it is a team effort. No one person could have done this, but as we pull together, I think we do a really good job. Uh, we're going to meet, um, June third to talk about the education, because we're going to start this process, but I need everybody to be aware and to be ready for what's coming up and have clear design. So we're going to be able to tear apart and have this presentation. We'll have advocates with names and thinking for that. So you can take a good look and in depth look at the education. And if we can't make it to twenty eighth, we'll invite the YMCA to our workshop for a week. If you can't make it to twenty eighth, you know, everybody doesn't want to run our dates. But we'll definitely have our presentations for you. Now, remember our workshop, our presentations only. So we'll be in detail. Mayor, I believe that ends my report. You all have any questions for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
No, all right. What about time?
Uh, we're starting our workshops at six thirty.
Was I allowed to start earlier or do you still start again?
Six thirty, please, because I gotta, I gotta, I gotta run to pick up baby boys, so. Six thirty is different.
Really early in the YMCA?
Yes, yes, sir. Both of them are Wednesday. Yes, if you voted Mr. Nethal to be chairman of that?
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Henry. I'm proud of your views there.
Good to hear good views for a change. Okay, now we're going to go on to item three, let's see, three C. Okay, three C, consideration action to approve the amendment to ordinance two eight five requiring consultation. Uh, Councilman Orkney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, staff and yes. Tonight I'm asking council to amend ordinance two eighty-five. With the new ordinance, an ordinance providing for amendment two eighty-five by substituting a revised paragraph, providing for comprehensive recreational funding and providing unexpected. That ordinance is twenty fifteen dash. Very, very favorable from two eighty, two eighty-five. This is for the day. Expenditures of set funds by the city shall be made with the consultation and advice of the Florisville City Parks Foundation. And other public and private entities with common senior goals and objectives, so that expenditures are consistent with the city's parks or common areas of maintenance, fitness programs, objectives and foundation initiatives of the program where management is concerned. We should not be asking the council. And this is the new ordinance. For as the city is in the process of updating its parks and recreation plans, including funding, the maintenance program and support thereof, and for as it is in the intent of the city, of the city council to include such activities in the remainder of this fiscal year and subsequent fiscal years. Now therefore, we decree an update as provided in the, in due a periphery adopted on May twenty-sixth, twenty eleven, periphery is revised and shall be as follows. This is the, the new one. Expenditures of budgeted funds, including the recreational utilities, shall be made upon council approval. Councils shall have that vote that say, we should not be asking for foundation or consultation or advice. We will work with them. And may improve maintenance for existing facilities and cemeteries. I scratched out a following public here, any input based upon the funds for onboard maintenance and for the city parks and recreation plans and programs. So that is the new amendment.
Mr. Striking, follow the public here?
Yes. Follow the public here, any input based upon the funds for onboard maintenance and for the city parks and recreation plans.
Mr. Turner, with the recommendation from Councilman Orkney, would this be a, a line item that we can talk about at budget time?
Yes, because I think the exception, what, what I inherited was actually small, so like there was matching for grants. But I think with this new ordinance and this new approach that you're taking, it would be something like a capital expenditure fund that you can use, uh, to make improvement. I've had several conversations with Councilman Nethal and reference to using this fund to test the one, the one-pronged approach to fix existing and to use those funds. Because they're just sitting there, uh, not being assessed anything. And remember that it's now at eighty-six, but it replenishes itself because every month it will replenish back up to eighty-six thousand, but it's a constant replenishing, so.
What's the annual revenue of that right now?
My key is about two thousand, four hundred.
Now, that is a, you don't have to wait to budget time. I mean, if you go, you know, since you're working with the party.
Yeah, I was just saying, we can, we can, we can do some amendments, but I mean, it doesn't necessarily, uh, I mean, we don't have to, the parks can come to, to council and we can prove it, we can not prove it. But we can also go, you know, back and forth with, with the parks as well. We don't have to, you don't have to change the ordinance to, or to read what it's already been doing.
Well, I, I think-
When we say parks, are we referring to our parks department?
The Parks Foundation. All right?
Well, how the ordinance reads right now is that you have to consult and get advice from them and reference to spending funds from that. Now, the first time I think we spent any funds was last year when I got the lawnmower. And then I went to the council, I went to, or they were, I got on their agenda, and I consulted with them, and then I went to the council because I was part of the life of the ordinance.
That is why I want to contribute.
Well, we can, I mean, the parks can say no, and we can still say yes.
No?
They can say yes, and we can still say yes.
But, but, but why should we go to them when the customers are sending it to us?
Uh, Mayor, you can gather me out of order if you like to. May I speak? Again, I'm Doug Jones, and I'm the president of the foundation. You just heard the city manager talk about team effort and whatever. To me, what you're trying to do is you're going single ship. You're not including the nine hundred people on this board. I think there's misunderstanding. We have never had the authority to spend a penny of that money. And the reason was given to us by the city attorney in January of twenty thirteen was that it was to be seed money to get grants to work in connection. To me, what you're doing is you're now legalizing the operational and maintenance fees of your parks using the money that was sold to the public to be for the additional work in the parks. If you read your ordinances for the common areas, just for keeping vegetation covered and even getting to the wellness, whatever. You're going to make it to where you people can use it as O and M money. And I would highly recommend that you, one, not desynergize what we currently have going. It's a slap in the face to the nine of us that sit on the board. There's, there's no reason on this earth why we can't work together. And now you're saying is that you don't want us involved in the process? Nobody's saying that. Yes, you are. You're taking it completely out. There's, there's people, other people involved that can come in and work. We can't spend the money. The process is, is that if we come up with any kind of grant process and go for the city manager, then, uh, then-
On board.
So I'm like, but you're legalizing your operational and maintenance of using the funds that were not set up to be O and M.
We're not that, we're not, we're not-
You're violating the law.
We're not like, you're wrong, sir.
Maybe. Now, the great thing from the law is if, if we, you know, vote on this ordinance or to, to, you know, basically not utilize the, the Parks Foundation, that eliminates us from receiving any type of grants as well, correct?
No, I don't know where they get that from.
Now, initially, I mean, from the onset back, it was two thousand and eleven is just when the ordinance passed. The conversation we said started before that. Now, what we're looking at during the conversation that I've had with Henrietta is approving the parks. So we're not talking about maintenance. We're not talking about lawnmowers for the park. If you remember, we sat here a couple of weeks ago, we talked about not buying a mower to shred the median because it did not comply with the Parks Foundation or the Parks Improvement. So what we're talking about, immediate needs, is come up, improve the bathrooms at, at Pecan Park, improve the bathrooms at City Park. You know, things of that nature. So we're all doing park improvement, not to buy any material. Now, of course, it's a charity to be bought. We're going to, you know, reconstruct the bathrooms and the material we need it, but it's all for park improvement. So I agree with Mr. Ortiz, I mean, if we're in line with the improvement of parks, I mean, that we should have that, we should have the authority, you know, to spend that money because that's how we sold the people was for park improvement. And unless, you know, unless we stray away from that and use it for, you know, monies other than that, which I'm not going to approve on my own vote, or I mean, I think we're well within the law. Now, I talked to one important member of the Parks Foundation. She said, you're all working on getting your own fundraiser, which is great. I know you have come leaps and bounds with this organization's first target. And you, you mentioned before that, you know, you haven't used any of the city's money. And, and you're not going to continue to, I mean, if you come up with your own, your own fundraiser and then continue with the nine board members. So we're not slapping anybody in the face. The thing is, these improvements need to be done. It shouldn't matter who approves them or who doesn't approve them. The thing is, there's a need for them. We, we need bathrooms at the Pecan Park. We need lights at the Lowdy Courts. You know, these basketball courts need improvements that all need to be done. So now we're at eighty-six thousand dollars. Let's just improve the parks and be done with it.
But I think we still need to, even though, you know, we decide on what we're spending, I'll just give what the Parks Foundation and just come with.
We're coming first. Henrietta, yeah, Henrietta attends every meeting with that foundation. Is there a member of the city staff on there?
We have a lead-in.
Uh, we have, we have a lead-in on, um, Alex was before, uh, but Danny has a hard time making meetings anew. So I actually attend their meetings when they go conflict with another meeting, such as, uh, community, uh, EDC council meetings. So I, they usually, you know, put reference to them and represent them. It is, it is such a subject that I understand that and reference to do that. And the more people that talk about it and confirm, but we just need to be able to have that money sitting there. Uh, I don't want, I didn't want to at the time use it for lawnmowers, but I didn't have a choice. And so this time we can go ahead and make those improvements to the bathrooms or whatever we need to do. There's something that's sitting there. We need to make that, those improvements. They're willing to. I could have a bathroom in the compound over there.
I believe we do.
And, um, that we had some issues, I believe, uh, council brought some issues that we had with the pavilion out there to the park that I need to be addressed at. Just don't have it right now in my budget. And reference to do it. I need to make some proper moves to that as well. I was looking for the election. I, I don't have a dog in this fight, but, um-
Well, there is enough fight. I think we're all on the same page. Uh, like Mr. Nethal mentioned, the foundation was created in two thousand and eleven, and the purpose was for the foundation to raise funds to improve parks. I don't know how much money-
Mr. Tejada, that was your recommendation, right, for the Parks Foundation?
As well as, uh, Mr. Nethal, yes. I, I agree. Uh, I don't know how much money they've had, they had in their account, but much of their money that they have in their account has come from the city of Florisville.
We will give them by ticket.
The tickets that they recently drafted off were given to them by the city of Florisville. The first holiday extravaganza, the city of Florisville gave them a donation.
How much?
I believe about four or five thousand dollars. I can't tell you exactly. And Mr. Guero just mentioned, well, we still need to confirm with them. We have a parks department. We have professional consultants that help us design parks. What we ought to do is say, we're going to buy this piece of equipment or playground equipment. How much can the Parks Foundation contribute to, to build this, uh, playground equipment? That's how we should be working. That's exactly how we should be working.
At the rate that it is, that's going right now, right? I mean, the, the, the way it is moving right now?
The way it's moving right now, the way it's moving right now for them to raise their funds and we use the money that we're, we're, we're collecting to improve our parks right now. We should be working together. You know, I, I agree, the Parks Foundation, uh, is, is a good organization. It was created for that purpose, to improve our parks. You know, if we need a piece of, uh, equipment, like I just mentioned, a piece of equipment is not cheap. You know, you can most spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars on a piece of playground equipment. How can we work together to make that happen? That's the way we should be talking. You know, and, and Mr. Jones can, can confirm what I'm saying. Most of the money they have in their account has been given to them by the city of Florisville.
Well, not anymore. And using my military experience and congressional money, you're still using the tax monies that you taxed your residents for operational and maintenance of the equipment. All of the extra things, to me, is what Mr. Rosenberg and you, sir, set up initially for this. It was a five and O vote. And to me, you're bastardizing the intent of twenty-eight or two eighty-five to add monies to your O and M. Your tax base and your annual budget should make for the repairs. It's a sin that for the last ten years, those parks have degraded to the status. Mr. Rosenberg pointed out at our meeting in January of twenty thirteen, you haven't had a reforestation program. There is no irrigation. Mr. Sax has got a backup answer and will be at our meeting next week to talk about how we can put irrigation in wall fields and in Pecan Park. We were attempting to go to HEB, but we found out that the previous board failed to do their responsibilities to the IRS and to the state. We lost our five oh one C three, and we lost our right to conduct business in Texas because the previous board sat on their high knees and let it fail. Thanks to Chris Hug and Mr. Rosenberg and four hundred dollars out of our monies, we got it all back last August. And we're trying to do things right. And we're trying to do things right. To me, it's nothing more than a money grab, that you're trying to move money to spend it like you want to, and your O and M funds should be responsible for fixing the toilets out there so the girls can use them.
That's what we would like to do.
Henryetta?
Mr. Turner, good proof of funds, when you bought the lawnmower, the lawnmower?
Well, uh, actually, I went to the Parks Foundation and conferred with them and shared information with them. Uh, they took a vote and said they were not adverse to it, and then I brought it to the council. But once the council approved it, then we were able to extend those funds. It, it, I have to have council approve.
So the Parks Foundation's been approved?
They, I just looked for their, their, I think it's a consideration, or what exactly is the term saying? I just have to consult with them. So I consulted with them prior to bringing it to you. Just like I would consult with PND before it comes to you, because that's what the ordinance told me to do. So I just consulted with them. And you know, there's sometimes PND, they says, yes, and they, and you're not saying no. Sometimes they say no, you say yes. So I just consulted with them, they took a vote to say, yes, they say okay. Consultational advice, and then I brought it to you for approval.
Uh, there, there's a matter of reason why it shouldn't stay that way as consult, consultation or advice.
What was their advice, Mike, when you asked about the, the mowers?
Uh, their advice was that we needed to do a lot, and they mentioned Pecan, Pecan Park was definitely one of their focuses, they wanted to do. I think not long after that, we went and put up some grills and some things that they had been working on for some time in reference to that. I think they were concerned about, um, using the money for this type of issue. I just expressed how dire need we were at that time, hopefully they'll take care of it. And they were talking about not making sure that when they...
Better, Mayor.
The blue buttons are not mowed down, so.
Can I, can I ask a question? Because I think all this has been taken out of context. First of all, when there is something needed at any one of those parks, these people here have not come to you. They might relay a complaint that they hear from the people in the city, that it's between you and Connie when you all check to see, or the guys tell you, we need to fix this, we need to do that. If it's a major expense, that's when you all bring it to us, otherwise you can make that decision. So we're not trying to change anything other than skipping...